Then we will go to, I'm going to jump over, Tyler, are you here for Paul to report on these?
Grants, yes.
Do you mind holding just a few minutes?
Absolutely.
And we'll jump over this and go to the Ledgway Road update and to the town manager's report, at least just for that one item. Because we have a resident of that road here tonight. I'll put you with it. Thank you.
Okay, so on Ledgway Road, I was asked to look into the ownership status of Ledgway Road after reviewing this with the files that we had. There was some information that was brought down from the lot park upstairs. And we reviewed that with our attorney and it was determined that, the attorney concluded that Ledgway Road is not any class of public highway. If it were deemed a class four road, that would still not prove any kind of illegal duty to the town to grant landlord's request to begin maintaining it. And the attorney gave us three different options to consider. To get the road is determined to be up to the standards of the town, the select board can make a motion to adopt the road as a town road under R 667448. Or you can simply deny the request or can entertain a petition from the property landowners to begin the betterment assessment process. And we've gone through the statute with the attorney and tried to figure out a punch list of how to do that. And we developed the process of what would need to happen in order to begin that process. And that's what I have up here. First is the select board received a petition from the abuders requesting that the town pursue a betterment assessment improvement. The petitioners will notice all parcel owners which benefit and they would become liable for the betterment assessment costs. A cost estimate is developed by the petitioners and evaluated by the town. The Board of Selectmen holds a betterment assessment hearing, either two separate meetings or combined. It is a detailed review of the layout and cost estimates. The Board of Selectmen then determines whether to proceed with the project. Abutting parcel owners, those are the ones living on the road, have 10 days to submit a protest to action. A majority is required to negate their request. Funds are then added to the budget and funds added to the revenue on the town budget side and then work would be completed to improve the road. Then the road would be accepted by the Board of Selectmen as a class five road. And the abutting parcel owners would be billed for the cost on a period from one to 10 years. And the method of percentage to each parcel would be determined by the Board of Selectmen. For example, you could use the amount of road frontage that parcel has, or you could use a, adjust what, the adjustment in the value of the property. It's really up to the Board to come up with a formula on how to recoup the cost of improvements.
Okay, I want to go over four documents with you very quickly, just for the minutes, representing the residents' basis for coming to the town for this. This document is dated September 22nd, 1977. Dear Mr. Holmes, to avoid future problems which could arise in preventing ownership of a street or road, we would like to ask you to do the following. Please arrange with your attorney to deed the town of Littleton the unnamed street road located in your Ledgway Development in Littleton on State Ledgway Road. Harold Sanders, Assistant to the Board. This was dated September 22nd, 77. The second document is December 2nd, 1977. Dear Harold, the warranty deed from Robert Holmes to the town of Littleton conveying Ledgway Road so-called duly executed November 23rd, 1977 was recorded in the Grafton County Registry of Deeds on November 30th, 1977, book and page number identified. I followed the original record deed to you here within. The third document is December 11th, 1987, so we go up 10 years. Dear Tom, this was to Tom Landry from Moulton, Sumaha, Vaughn, and Ransmere. Dear Tom, I have just discovered the following items in one of Peter Smith's old files in this office. Peter Smith at that time was a Superior Court Judge. A letter from Harold Sanders, Assistant to the Littleton Board of Selectmen dated December 7th of September 77, requesting our client to deed the unnamed street in Ledgway Development. Number two, office copy of the deed from Robert Holmes to the town of Littleton dated November 23rd, 77, recorded at Grafton County. Number three, copy of cover letter of the late Francis G. Moulton, formerly of this firm, dated December 2nd, 1977. Forwarded the recorded deed to the Littleton Board of Selectmen. Should you wish to examine the original of Mr. Sanders' letter, please feel free to stop by my office. I trust this should resolve any questions the town may have as to the fact that it accepted the road in question 10 years ago. I further trust that the town will begin maintaining the road without further difficulties for the owners of the abutting lots. The last item is a January 29th, 1988 letter responding to this letter from Tom Landry, the town manager. Dear Tom, I have reviewed your letter of January 26th and find that it does accurately reflect my understanding of the issue. The weight of evidence does indicate that a previous Board of Selectmen did accept Ledgway Road. Under the provisions of RSA 229:5, this road has a class six status which carries no town maintenance provisions. Sincerely, Tom Landry. So do you want to tell us again for the record and for friend to hear this, what the attorney said in reference to these documents?
Yeah, so what he said was basically that the process for a town accepting a road prior to 1994 was unclear. In 1993, the legislature enacted, I think it's RSA 67448, that would grant the select board the authority to accept the road. His finding was that if there was some kind of action, that we don't have it recorded anywhere, and if it was there, it might not have actually been legally able to accept the road in the process that would have been referred to here. So what he's suggesting is that we take up the issue again to keep it clean and at the Board, consider a petition request from the abuders to accept the road and do one of the three that I mentioned earlier, which was basically if it was up to town standard to go ahead and, you know, the authority to adopt the road, to accept the road under 67448, deny the request or begin the betterment assessment request for the petition. Yeah, and I mean, just the recording of a document doesn't necessarily mean that it's actually been accepted, you know. For example, we have another, we have a easement tonight that is executed, we have a record of it being executed. The party could have recorded it starting now if they wanted to, but without a formal assessments by the select board, it would basically remain a recorded document without a legal right to transfer.
Even with the recording being requested by a representative of the select board? It seems like that's what that first letter is, is a request from the town of Littleton to deed it over. But you're saying that even still, with that request and then the deeding, it doesn't necessarily mean that it was accepted in the end?
Right, and for example, even like the opposite, like for the select board to transfer a piece of property, it has to go through certain legal requirements, you know, the tool? He's saying it's a private road, in the offhand chance that it was a class six road, that would still not put it in a good place in the betterment assessment part can still take place, I believe, to move from the class six to a class five. So he's suggesting that that's the most clean way for us to move forward, so that we have a good record of it and the road becomes a clean town road that's brought up to, just not.
And when it comes to a betterment assessment, I don't think it matters whether it is a private or a class six, it's the same thing.
Yeah.
So essentially, it doesn't matter?
Right, yeah.
The history from 1977.
Unfortunately, I mean, for Ledgway Road, the residents.
Well, I mean, it's a matter of just getting a clear course of how we move forward. Can I ask you, you have them here that, well, the petition, how many people do we need to sign such a petition?
I'd say call me, you know, I'll give you that.
All right. And it does say the cost estimate developed by us?
I would think you probably could work with, there was a, George put together.
Yeah, George put together.
Yeah, and I think.
Yeah, we got some estimates, but from what I was reading on the RSA, I kind of was seeing that as if we went down the road of RSA that it was, that the select board would take over the whole process, including getting the estimates and deciding what to go with. But I may have missed.
Yeah, according to, I went over the statute and there's a, the National Municipal Association put out a couple of guidelines for the process. And so what I tried to do was take all that information and build it into a step by step.
Yeah.
And it looks like it's that way, but I would, I mean, it looks like it's, you know, the woldy abuders have to come up with this and then the town has to review it and approve it. But I imagine that might be more of a partnership deal, because we're not going to want to, you know, base our information about how much it's going to cost off of an incorrect.
Right, okay. I think, just as a Board, addressing an issue from a resident, I think what's difficult here, no one's to blame and there's no fault. But conclusions were reached 27 years ago, 37 years ago, which apparently weren't true.
Right.
If there was no legislative support for coming to the conclusion, they're doing what they did for the towns, because it certainly read that way.
Yeah, and that's okay, that we don't have that conclusion, that's, I think puts us in a different spot.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I think I know what it is, but what isn't here is, what is the request?
The request is to become a town maintained road. We've got four amendments now and there's a variety of these.
I think maybe an earlier report probably brought that up. But what we'll, we would have to work on is to develop this petition.
Right.
And get the correct number of property owners to sign it.
Okay, and the only other question I would have tonight is, George did put together that presentation, we did get some quotes. My question is, we use the state parameters for what up to spec is. There's a variety of roads in town that are more narrow than ours, you know, could use government, have them grandfathered if you will. So my question is, are we able to relax any of the specifications or is it very stringent? When we look at and say, it's a dead end road, here's how much travel it gets, it's in better shape than many of these other roads that are already being cared for, are we able to relax some of the requirements or is that a steadfast rule that goes by what the state statutes, sorry, not statutes, but state recommendations as far as everything?
I'd say probably that kind of thing would need to be discussed with the highway.
We've discussed it.
We've discussed it.
And a lot of that is relaxed.
Yeah.
One of the things that we've made a mistake of in this town in the past is accepting inferior roads. All you have to do is go for a ride through the strain development and you'll see that there are roads up there that are 40 feet completely rebuilt. You should accept roads that are built properly. Their road is closed, it's just narrow in width and is a percentage of grade that's unacceptable and needs a government, but all of it, most of it has had to change.
Now, that stuff I looked at and say, does it have to be a metal guardrail? Could it be a wood that reduces the cost in 150 feet of pavement? Could it maybe be, you know, does 30 feet of pavement do what needs to be done as opposed to having a whole 150?
The way I look at it is if anything is cut now, the town will have to pick up in 15 years.
Right.
You know, when it, there's reasons they have these guys.
Sure.
And I think it's important, and I don't think that's a very expensive job.
No, it was 35,000 was the, I think the most reliable quote. Yeah, it's 35,000 once a month, six residents is what we have, four houses and two empty lots.
Probably, yeah, then you could look at your time period that it takes to get your cost back.
Well, I think it's a no brainer.
Yeah.
Just because we're paying to maintain it now anyways.
Right.
Yeah, okay, so I'll contact you.
Yeah.
Start working on putting that through.
I don't think we need a motion. We're fine, I think the way we're doing it. We were looking for the answer and I believe we have the answer, at least for right now. So, thank you for coming in.
Yeah, thank you.
Captain Tyler, come back to your items here for the grants. You have a lot of grants, so why don't you start with one you'd like us to consider first?
Well, first one I have was provided to me was the STEP grant. And I was advised that these were all, had been provided to you ahead of time? Okay, excellent. So looking at the STEP grant, the three that we have here, this grant specifically designated, money is from the state, should we accept them to help supplement additional patrols in the town of Littleton? And it's a new formula, the way they're doing this, which is actually very interesting, is before, when we accepted this grant, of these grants, the process was we were given specific times, dates, when we had to go out and do these enforcements, where they certainly relaxed those and allowed us to pick our own times, our own dates to go out for the most part and do our enforcement and our education with this, which is going to be beneficial. And with STEP grant, what they are providing is a set amount of money for us to take and apply towards hours of patrol. That could be anything specifically to this one, from speed enforcement to stop sign enforcement, to distracted driver enforcement, things of that nature. So it'll help augment extra time for the officers to go out there and do some enforcement if we can get this accepted.
So I'd be looking for a motion to approve the grant of $3,400, maybe a few dollars and 48 cents.
Shall we move?
Second.
Any further discussion? Here and now, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Second.
The second one I have here is a event of the student basketball. It's a bicycle and pedestrian patrol. And specifically, this grant is designed to allow for extra hours for officers to go out into the community, specifically either on bike patrol capacity or foot patrol capacity. And this is to help for pedestrian safety and to basically enhance anybody who's on foot in town. Specifically in the past, we utilized this extensively on our Main Street here and where the River District is, with the bike path leading on the backside where River Glen is and back and forth with that. We've had this grant for a couple of years now, it's been very productive, it's helped us just be out there and be visible more.
Do we have bicycles?
We do, we do. We have three of bikes out at the, we seem to go through cycles as far as interest with that. It's not a mandatory program that we make the officers do. We think right now, currently have two officers who are trained for bike patrol. And we did utilize some bike patrol hours with this grant in conjunction with foot patrol last year, that officers went out there and performed that.
I can say to you, and I don't know how many people in town I'm representing in saying this, but people like the bikes.
Why should they?
And they like the pedestrian, walking on Main Street, you know, having police officers walk Main Street. And the bike, the bike patrols, remember one year we had them as, I think they were just part of the operation here, it wasn't even based on a grant.
Right.
This goes back some years. Many people expressed satisfaction with that and they hope to see it come back.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, this grant is again for $3,482.48.
I would move acceptance of it?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We have one more here.
So the last grant that we have here is for tire deflation device. So the focus on this grant is that, should we have a specific piece of equipment, which is a tire deflation device, that we want to purchase, that with this grant, which is up to $600, that the state will match half the cost of that piece of equipment. So basically, if the piece of equipment costs $600, they will match $300 worth of that, purchase of that. Basically, it's a 50/50 match there for that. And so we're seeking to purchase another piece of equipment like this. And this is basically designed for situations either, it could be anything from where we're at a residence and we don't need, we're trying to keep someone from leaving on a high risk situation, we can implement this device so they take off, they will get very far, or if it's a high speed pursuit, we can deploy this piece of equipment to bring that to a safe inclusion.
Do we already have one of these pieces of equipment?
We do, most of the crews are outfitted with them. We still have at least one that needs that.
Okay, and this is what this is for?
Yes, we, we have to use this last year as well, they've cut the cost down of that equipment.
Okay.
I would move the acceptance of the tire deflation grant for $600.
Second, just with a question?
Yes.
You have to, you have to give them quarterly reports?
Yes, from, so the quarterly reports for all of the grants, not specific to the tire deflation one, I believe, but to the other bicycle and STEP grants, it's basically, we have to submit to them how many hours we've used.
Oh, no, those are clearly, I couldn't figure them out on the tire.
I'm not sure if that, honestly, if that applies to tire or not.
Do they, do they put that language in every, it's in the?
It's in every grant I've seen so far. And some of it is kind of generic.
You don't think you have to give them quarterly reports on this?
I don't believe so, but if we do, it's a quick clarification on that and maybe just, did we, did we use the money or not?
In other words, you want to buy it during the first quarter?
Well, it would probably be ambitious, yeah, exactly.
Okay, thank you. We have a, we've already accepted this.
Okay, we didn't vote.
Oh, okay, we had a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Going back to the town manager's report, I thought what we were doing today is our first day in the new year, so to speak. Andrew would just quickly go over some of the items, some of the issues that we're facing for this coming here?
Some of the things that are, that we're still dealing with, we have one more pilot out there that hopefully will be done with in the next week or so. That's the LRH pilot. Our assessing services is going to be, we had that out for bid, potentially a new assessing firm, depending on how the bids come back. The rail abandonment process is ongoing, we've got a little update in there. We have, we have our application in, it was kicked out and we're hoping to have the results from our latest update in April. We have the mapping project, which is ongoing. This was a review of all the parcels in town. Initially, there were three phases of the project, but after starting the process with the more condensed area, this area that we're in right now, it was actually increased to six phases. We're in the, I believe, phase four right now. One of the hangups has been the border with Bethlehem. There's a bit of issue with that, where we're trying to actually locate the real boundary. We have a surveyor and a title searcher working together to narrow that down.
Yeah, I, my understanding, and this goes back three years ago, the state notified both towns that its line between Bethlehem and Littleton was different than the line we were maintaining. And I know when we discussed this a few years ago, during an open meeting, there would be the possibility that Littleton could lose a little bit of property to Bethlehem, but it's just not been resolved. So that's one that you're working on.
Yeah, there's a statutory requirement that select boards perambulate, is that the correct term? Which means you guys have to walk around.
Everybody lives.
Yeah.
Walk the borders.
We got a warrant meeting for the, for your walking.
Yeah.
Let's see, they, they've got the rail abandonment, technology, town office, there's a number of other issues, for example, the Moore Dam, some other lawsuits out there, SBA towers, that one's coming to an end. We have lease with the Opera House, which is ongoing. There's also a aggressive actions policy or ordinance that we're working on this year.
Yeah, I want to go back to the town lease with the Chamber of Commerce. They've had a lease for now, I think, three years, and it's coming due April 1st. And so we're working on renegotiating that lease. And also with the Opera House Commission, there seems to be, when you read the responsibilities of the Chamber of Commerce and then read the description of the commission, there's some overlap there. So I think we're trying to clarify that, that information. And with the panhandling, if I can use that term, you used a different term.
Aggressive actions.
Aggressive actions.
Yeah.
As I think we've discussed here once before, the American Civil Liberties Union took issue with the wording, if not the intent, of what we were trying to do and agreed to sit down with us and work up a better statute that they feel would meet their needs regarding First Amendment rights and meet our needs in terms of perhaps enhancing the safety of our, of our community. So I will take that responsibility with you, because I worked on that committee for it. And we should contact the attorney from Mitchell Law firm soon and sit down with the CEO and begin to work on a new statute. Okay, and I think that's about it, right?
Yeah.
Fort Fairfield was passed.
Fairfield, we have to go through the public hearing process.
Right, I noticed that on the EPOS schedule that starts. And Moore Dam assessment has its own schedule with its own subcommittee to look at.
That's right, yeah.
Okay, good.
And I've also put in there, just for you to think about, for example, Ed got to me a week or so ago, some thoughts he had on different things to look into, but if you could each think about different priorities that you would have for, you know, direction of the town, or any issues that you wanted to focus on, just to think about that for future discussion and we could develop a list of priorities for 2016, '17 to accomplish.
Yeah, well, just going back quickly to when Captain Tyler was sitting here with us going over the grants. Visibility on Main Street by the police department or by other departments, but primarily, you know, the police are specific, is something that people are always requesting.
Certainly.
Clearly, if we could, we can't, because time doesn't allow for it, but if we had foot patrols all day, every day, 24 hours a day, that would make some people pretty happy, but it's not going to happen.
I spoke about this with the newspapers and just, you know, there's an idea or a saying that perception is reality. And so like you're saying, if there was somebody always out there, people would realize that there are daily foot patrols. And I think what they're going to do is try to cover it in an upcoming paper. The Lindenville TV channel, which is that school of TV channel, which isn't over here, but they've also, I think they, they already shot some footage over on Main Street recently to just kind of talk about community policing in Littleton and its benefits. But trying to do as good a job as we can of also just keeping the media informed, helping them to stay focused on, or focused on some of the community issues to help the public be aware of what's already happening.
All right, thank you. Anything else I may report? Did you go over that?
Yeah, I think so, just not, not in great detail, but there's, there's more for us to review and go over. You know, one thing I would like to do is thank SNS, they've, they've locked into a contract at the town office for our internet service for at least another year. And we, the SNS offers a high-speed tower from their facility. And they've agreed to go ahead and hook us up to that and we can get the benefits of the higher speed and not charge us for a year. So, you know, it's pretty nice of them to do that.
When they do charge us, do they tell you what that charge would be?
Yeah, and it will be saving money every month, I think around, I think it was around $40 to $50 a month with better speed connections.
Okay. All right, audit, audit, all right, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is the audit findings. You may remember about a month ago, we discussed the 2014 audit, and there was a number of exceptions that I believe Karen very adequately addressed for us. And one that was left out there was the library trustee's request, that they review the investment policies once a year and let us know what their conclusion is. So do you want to speak to that issue, Karen?
Well, I, yes, if you don't mind. I have been getting emails back and forth with Jean Dickerman, and they reviewed the 2015 investment policy. They have decided to make a few changes to it. And they've been talking with a financial advisor to do some of those changes. And I've been told that the been told that the, there was only one minor change as of the 18th of March. The board planned to sign off on the revised policy, and this is this coming Wednesday, that they're signing off on the policy.
I would make a recommendation to you to just indicate to Jean that this is a requirement. I've got three years of audit reports here. We're flagged on this every year. And so they, it's an obligation they have to this board to give us their opinion once a year as to, you know, whether or not to agree into it or making some changes to it.
I'll ask her to do, do the same cycle I do, which usually October, November, every year, to bring it to her board, to have it approved before the end of the year, so that every year it's done. And I'll just make that suggestion.
I'd make that recommendation, and again, she was, the intent here was fine, but she said, if you want, I can send you. Well, it's not a matter of whether we want it, you really need to send it to us. So, all right, thank you. So you'll get this back to us in two weeks then?
Yes.
Okay. Fixed asset policy, approve the updated policy. We have had a copy of this for about six weeks now, and I have some questions, and I have a couple of recommendations that I look for a motion to approve. It's this one here.
Do you want a motion for a start?
Yeah, just a second.
So move.
Second.
So is this disposal going to be incorporated until?
I'm hoping that you will incorporate that night if you choose to. It just will make it easier for the town manager, the department head to.
So we should bet on this as well?
Yes.
Karen, could you come up over here perhaps?
Sure.
This is under fixed asset procedures. It's the second section. You have two sets of policies here. One is fixed asset policy, and then the procedures. Under five inventory, which is about three pages in, a fixed asset scheduled by department reporting the current status of the department's inventory, be distributed to appropriate department heads at least once annually each year. All inventories will be subject to, okay, my question is this. You have a sentence in here that says, "All inventories will be subject to unannounced audits by the finance department." Has there ever been an unannounced audit in your town that was?
Not that I remember, and I've been here since 2002.
I would recommend that you take that word out.
Okay.
The reason why, it sounds like you're functioning as a police, as a police function.
That's what an audit is.
Yeah, I know, an audit is. But if you take out the word unannounced, and just leave the word audit in there, and given it's never been acted on.
Okay.
You know, you've got the right to do audits. And an unannounced audit makes it sound as if you're standing behind a tree ready to come in at a moment's notice. And because it's never been done, that's a good thing. The fact that you need to audit periodically is, is a good thing as well.
Could I have one comment?
Sure.
We do do unannounced audits of any cash that any department has, petty cash.
As you should.
As you should, right. Could you give us the once a year, I know George did it when he first came here, the inventory review of all of the assets, you know, the, of what are considered to be fixed assets?
So you want to know what I do, or?
No, no, when you get a final report in, would you guys like to see a final?
You want to see the listing?
Yeah, listing, listing property once a year. That would be good, if you could just do that for us.
There is a fixed asset report in the town report that lists all the property.
Yeah.
So I can give you that, too.
That's fine.
But I do one also for the property liability, that lists property that needs to be insured, and I can provide you that as well.
One of the town reports probably would satisfy you.
Well, does that give, does that give a listing of everything?
It does. It doesn't include the serial numbers.
Does it, what does it include, what's not there from the year before?
It excludes the stuff from the year, that, it excludes the items that have been disposed of, but it includes everything else, so you get everything, including works in progress.
Okay, give me a definition, or your definition of discrepancies.
Um, serial number being wrong.
Okay, oh, right. But what if a truck goes missing?
That we'd have to report.
Would that be a discrepancy?
That would definitely be a discrepancy.
That's how, that's how I kind of read this. Although, I think what we're saying here, when George sells one of his vehicles and gets a new one, the new report will show the new vehicle, the year before report will show the old vehicle. I bring this up because we periodically, at least I am, four years into this, I stopped on the street and asked, well, why did we do this, when we in fact have that one over there? You know, why did we get rid of the six-horse wooden water wagon? Why do we have to go buy a water truck? I'm just joking there. But maybe a way to update us in terms of, and let me go back and look at the annual report and see if that'll satisfy what I'm looking for, because I didn't do that. I have one other question here, and it's under the same section, number eight, recommended life cycle of fixed assets. Whose life cycle is it?
It's a.
Where do you draw from?
I tried to draw on what we've had for history on a lot of these items. We have vehicles that we, previously I've used a sample that another town gave me, and we were keeping vehicles a lot longer than what the other town had. So I started thinking, well, how, how long do we try to keep one of our trucks? It usually runs seven to 10 years.
Yeah, you're not using an insurance company's life tables?
No.
I'm not, not a life insurance company, but a property.
Property liability company, yeah.
You know, what prompted my request was auto sedans, police cruisers, five years. You have heard this comment, I have heard it over the years. I've been driving my car for 17 years. It's got 240,000 miles on it. Why do we have to replace these cars every? So my recommendation, and maybe it doesn't have to go anywhere, but my recommendation is to maybe look at what a property and casualty insurer would have for usages, police cars, fire trucks, whatever it may be, just to help us out in terms of verifying that our numbers are just not our numbers to meet our own specific needs. And that, you know, that's just something to consider. Other than that, I don't have any. Oh, I did have a question. Under description, historical buildings such as Opera House, Library, Useful Life, 250, is that 250 years?
Yeah.
Okay. I remember when the engineers looked at the Bronson Building, and they said, this building has good bones, it'll last another 60 years. So where did the 250 come from as a number?
To me, and this was just my opinion, I use my opinion, in 250 years, we're going to have to put a lot of money into it, like we did the 600,000 or 900,000 we put into the Opera House. So when we put that type of money into it, it actually adds back in toward the value of the building.
I understand.
And it starts depreciating again.
Okay.
Generally, the first 50 years, you would hope not to put a lot of money into a building. But the bones of the building would hopefully be around if it's structured properly in 250 years.
Well, you're getting descriptions here of buildings in general. You gave an example of the Opera House and the Library, but really, that, that may or may not apply to them specifically, right? But you're saying 250 is, with renovations periodically, the structure itself should last 250 years.
Yes.
Okay, fine. Do you have any other questions? Okay. I do have a question about the other attachment that you want us to approve. Why would you put vehicles in with equipment and supplies under $10,000? Don't we always approve, when we sell, we bring the bids here?
You're not required to. There's been some research, and I believe Andrew has the information on that. We're not required to put them up for bid.
Okay.
And sometimes that process of bidding pulls us up and tries to get rid of the equipment fairly quickly. So the, this was to try to expedite some of that, and not have to bring them here. I believe Andrew could tell you. Did you bring that information?
A little bit of legal.
The legal information? There's a state, the only thing that's required is anyone that is on the board or an employee, if they're interested in bidding, that it has to go through a process so that it's not deemed.
We have a motion in second for this one. We're going to prove this.
Okay, we have a motion in second, so all those in favor indicate by saying aye to the fixed asset policy and procedures.
All right.
All right, thank you. On this attachment, among all of the equipment we buy here, there's an emotional component to vehicles. And if we don't, my fear is, if we don't bring, like when we're ready to get rid of a vehicle, right, police cars in particular, we always bring the envelopes forward in public meetings, we open the envelopes, and it may be 3,000, it may be 4,000, it may be $290.90, whatever. But it's a process we go through so that the taxpayers or the public can see us do this. I think vehicles are, in my mind, it's a fixed asset, it's listed as a fixed asset. It just has a little different political and emotional component to it, given the debate we go through every year when we're putting these things up on warrant articles. Not so much in the highway department, but clearly in the police department, and clearly in the fire department because of cost. We have comments come forward and a process that we usually go through, so that would just be my concern. Other than that, it reads well.
It just looks better. It eliminates the appearance of a conflict.
So the decision to get rid of something like that could be discussed by the town manager, department head, and they could dispose of it as they deem appropriate. And with your information, that would be putting it up to bid. If I'm hearing you correctly.
Well, he's just saying you treat vehicles differently than you do others.
But if you look at number two.
Yep.
On B, says, "Any surplus item with a value of less than 10,000 may be disposed by the town manager and department head as they deem appropriate."
Yeah, right.
I think they're saying, though, they would rather vehicles.
Other vehicles.
The vehicles we want to have a goodbye party.
So do we want to add in line two, number two, number A, any property which is considered to be surplus and valued at 10, over 10,000, or a vehicle will be disposed of by the select board, the board of selection?
Or just? Yeah, that would.
That one change.
It'll do it.
Yeah, that would avoid future confusion, if we just, instead of just crossing it out up there. Somebody could say, well, limited to, but not.
I mean, we've been challenged on being able to do what we do on the bidding process. We've been challenged on that. So you don't have a right to do that. That has to go before the board is.
Wow.
And so.
If you read the legal.
Oh, we understand. You don't have to read this to legal.
So I move that we approve policy for disposal of town-owned property as amended.
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Old County Road easement, do you want to explain that to us, Andrew?
Yeah. Thanks, Karen.
Thank you, Karen. Are you leaving now?
If you'd like me to.
Well, we'd love you to stay, but you can leave before they close the border.
Thank you.
So this is an easement deed from Travelers Inn, and it's been executed by Dinesh Patel, who's the owner of the property. What this does is gives the town the right of way, the ability to maintain and use and access the right of way at the intersection of Meadow Street and Old County Road. The, this is, this will allow us, once the reconstruction effort has happened, it's actually going to relocate the entrance from where it is now and move it further down, and eliminate some, some issues that have been created there over the years. The design is actually, I think, been out there for six years, and we're finally moving on it now. If you have any other, any questions? I have a map of it that I could put up on the screen. Just trying to put it onto my.
Do we have action to take here?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
It's the next, it's on the, it's under board action.
Has this been registered?
It hasn't been recorded yet. We've given them until Thursday at 12:30 to record at Grafton County Register of Deeds.
To Andrew's credit, he began to put some pressure on a number of people to get this done before E P O first, so they can start the construction in April.
Didn't George go out and do some painting or something to help?
No, he parks a large truck here so they couldn't get in.
Yeah, right. Well, there was a lot of discussion about, yeah, different barriers.
So, we vote on that later, after citizen report. So we're looking at the driveway and the abutments to the driveway.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's primarily what we're talking about there.
Yeah, in order to accommodate the relocation of the intersection, some of the issue involved the entrance and exit of larger vehicles, tour buses, semi-trucks. In the, in the old setup, we had trucks parking in a way that really interfered with traffic. This moves the intersection down, and it, it gives a place for larger vehicles to park out of the way, and controls traffic in and out of both Old County Road and McDonald's.
So how far has that moved?
The Murphy, it's really small here. Let me see if I can. So if you see, and George can correct me.
Is that going to move the whole thing in wide enough, or just?
Moving it, I don't know.
George, let's come.
Basically, what they've done is they've created just one entrance. It's going to be real similar to the entrance you see beside Hadlock's. They've eliminated McDonald's having their own driveway. So the curb cut is much smaller. What that's going to do, that's going to control two places where cars are entering and exiting. And it's also going to move it up a little bit further, I say up, closer towards the bridge, so you don't have people shooting across 100 feet of road trying to get on the interstate. Don't be deceived by the radiuses you see going in and out in the hashed-out areas. The hashed-out area is just a rumble strip, to let people, indicate to people they're getting closer to the edge, I guess. So there, there is going to be quite a bunch of turning radius there. That fooled me this morning, I was able to enlarge it like Andrew just did. Now the center median is sloped curve up four inches to a concrete poured surface. So it's not like you're going to hit a six-inch vertical curve. The bad news is, if you enlarge a little bit more, you can see there is some signage in that center median. And I asked the state, who is going to be responsible for replacing that signage as it gets knocked over weekly? And they said they own the signs out towards the road. We see this a lot going on and off the industrial back bridge. That sign's on the ground while it is standing up. As you exit off the bridge, you say you take a left, go towards Burger King, the one that's in the center of the road there, it's knocked down.
Oh, I see, okay.
It's knocked down a considerable amount of time. So that's probably the only. So that's probably the only maintenance issue I see for us, is if we are held responsible for, I think it's an R4, the designation on that plan out there.
Yeah, I see it.
Uh, no, we could, you know, we could choose to eliminate it. It's going to be our road in there. A couple of good things I do see about this is, it's going to help with our winter maintenance. You can only imagine what it's like trying to keep the snow cleaned out of the McDonald's entrance and all that other square footage. Here, you can see by the easement where the town's limits are.
Okay.
Which is going to help our winter maintenance, it's actually going to give ownership to the businesses that are there to clean their areas, which I see that as a benefit to us.
So with a large truck, George, coming in, it's going to be able to come in and then go to that large circular area that's above, yeah?
Yeah, these, these are all done with big templates, by these engineering firms. I, I gotta say, yes, I, I personally, I couldn't-
This was the answer that they had a few years ago to the truck parking issue, unannounced. This would give them parking room next to McDonald's where they can pull in there.
Let's, let's hope it all works, and let's hope they use it.
So when do they plan to start it?
April 4th, but they actually requested, they were, they were talking today, as long as there were no posted road, state roads between where they need to get their equipment and their materials, they can start earlier. One of the other limiting factors was when the asphalt plans open up.
Correct, they're going to start as soon as possible. One of the good news is, I perceive it as good news, Coleman has the contract to do the work, so we'll get a reputable company out of the North Country, you know, we're not going to hit, get hit by a fly-by-night outfit out of Wilbrae, Mass, it's going to be here today and gone tomorrow, so that's reassuring for us.
How long's it going to take?
It's going to take three to four weeks. It's, it's not a complicated job.
Oh, that's all?
Yeah. Well, but they're not going to build that parking lot, too, are they?
Yes, they have.
Oh, they are?
Yes.
So that whole thing, well, let's say four to six weeks.
Yeah, you know, once again, it's, it's not a real complicated job, there's not much going on there, there's just-
Yeah.
Peeling some stuff up and regrading it, and paving is, paving is the big thing, and one of the most complicated things on the whole project is your signage and line striking.
Okay, good, anything else you want to touch on here?
You know, we had our pre-construction meeting today, and it just seems like everything's falling into place, so.
This ongoing historical trademark may be starting to lift and disappear.
Yeah, headlocks happy?
We had them review the easement language, and they had some additional requests, I think they wanted their law to be cited specifically, which I think that we were able to address that in another way.
Okay.
Yeah, they're happy.
Okay, good.
Yeah, and we've included them on the process, even had a meeting there with them.
Good.
Okay, fine, thank you. Citizen input, are there any questions or concerns? Dan?
Yes, you were questioning about the term for people who aggressively ask for money and weren't sure if you should use panhandlers or not. I was wondering what you call people who, they hide their appearance so you can't tell who they are, and they take your money with force, they threaten you and take, take your money with force, what, what do you call people like that?
Who are, who's covering their faces?
The people who are demanding money from you.
Oh, but those are robbers, usually.
Okay, well, I, I wanted to let you know that we've got hundreds of robbers in town here. Couple of weeks ago or so, they went to, I couldn't tell who they were because they did it in secret, and they use force, and they threatened me that if I don't give them money, they're going to take my property. Also, note to the pastors and the rabbis in the town, they're not, they're not informing their, their flocks that one of the commands that they teach their flocks that they were given was just four words, thou shalt not steal, and nothing follows that or anything else, and they're allowing their, their, their flocks to, to take people's money without, without regular pants.
I think what our, what our ordinance was trying to address was the behavior preceding or following the request for money, not, not the request itself, because that's protected, but it was the, you know, I think the scenario, I think you've heard it, of somebody walking up to their car late in the afternoon, and somebody follows them up to the car, and then pounds on the window and asks for money. That second behavior, not the asking, but the following or preceding, the, the tour bus parking in front of one of the stores on Main Street, waiting for people to get off, you know, the bus, is there, is there a possible issue there from a safety standpoint?
Well, I actually had-
That was, that was the question.
Yeah, I actually had somebody, I was parked over here on Main Street, come up to the window and, and give me a hard, heavy story and ask for money, and I said no. But in this instance, what I'm talking about is these people have threatened me that if I don't give them the money, they're going to, they're going to send people with guns to take it.
Our, our ordinance doesn't address that issue. I mean, obviously, we're looking at a specific behavior that's somewhat different.
Well, the, the people that are, that are harassing me are doing worse than the guy that just asked me for money, I could tell him no, but now I don't have any, I don't have any means of stopping these people from taking my money. If I don't give them the money, they're going to take my property.
Okay.
Nobody cares, huh?
Well, caring is one thing, but it's noted, but it just doesn't address our ordinance as we wrote it.
And I wasn't talking specifically about the ordinance, because the ordinance, the problems that I had, I could take care of by just saying no. I, there's no way I can protect myself from these other people that I don't know who they are, they, they hidden theirselves, and I don't know who they are.
All right, so noted, thank you.
Is there anything you can do about it?
No.
Well, it's a crime, you can go to the police.
The, the police are complicit in it. If, if I don't give them the money, the police are going to be the people who come and take my property.
If the police can't help you, how can the selectmen help you?
I don't know.
I don't believe the selectmen have the power to help you.
Well, the selectmen were, were complicit in also, they were telling people to do things to take my money.
Then perhaps your legislator.
The legislator, you guys are all, you guys are all in bed with each other.
I don't have an answer for it, I guess I can't help it.
Well, we thank you, we, we noticed, obviously, but it's one of those situations that's, it's not what we're trying to address here in our ordinance. Anything else? Yes, sir.
I'd just ask you guys, you know, I'm in the board, the elected man, a really more cooperation, and by cooperation, I mean is this, is, you know, I know that, let's laugh a little bit, I'm into the, quote, unquote, minority, okay, you know, but you know better than I do, minority and majority, they work together. I hope you understand what I'm trying to say. That's what I mean, be a minority, that doesn't mean, no minority, you know, personally, I'm talking about minority, you know, into the political circle, okay? You guys have been around for a long time, and you know better than I do that they are minority people, that they really want to cooperate with the majority. If this doesn't happen, for whatever reason, because maybe minority, you guys think they don't have the words out, it's wrong, you know, you know, it's very wrong. Maybe you guys sure, you know, I mean, it's not suggested, I'm not that, because I'm a regular citizen, maybe you guys should think about that. And also, when I suggest, that's the words that Mr. Woods uses, say, I suggest to you guys, I don't suggest, not that, to you guys, you guys are the one that wrongs in the town the best way you can. A lot of people appreciate it, and that's great. When I would like, if it's possible, I would like for the town manager, which, you know, right now, it's the main voice in this town, that's the way I understand. If it's the main voice in this town, when the town manager, the town is open with the town's report, or anything that are going on, you know, it's, it's got to be very open. That's what I mean, you know, in the end of the day, if I go to the town manager, excuse me, may I have a copy somewhere? Town manager report, oh, I don't have it, no, no, you've got to have it. This is by the law, not because I say so, it's the law, all right? Now, you know, it's, this is probably the last time that I ask you for something, I'm just, would like a little cooperation, I come here, just to listen, and you guys, I know you try very hard to do a good job. Sometimes, you know, you got your own faults, like everybody else, nobody's perfect, but I would like, you know, more cooperation from the town manager. When I ask them something, you know, it's really, that's special of these words that the town manager uses all the time. They are turnip for the town, they are turnip for the town, if it is a turnip, it's so, you know, powerful, bring him over here, let him talk, you know, they are turnip for the town, he's got nothing to do what's going on in town. They are turnip for the town, they're just going to tell you a couple of, you know, legislative things, laws and stuff like that, but what it comes for the town, it's us, citizens. They want to pay your salary, everybody else, that's what I ask, if it's possible, you know, it's just, when he makes the report and everything that he writes, it's nice, that, you know, in the minority, I'm always, you know, they give it up.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for, anything from input up front, anyone? Okay, thank you. We're going to go to our last item in the public meeting, which is to approve the Old County Road easement.
I think we accept it.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We have a set date for public hearing on sale of town-owned property. Are we looking for, you mean a, an agreement?
No, we're just announcing, there's going to be, you're going to be holding two public hearings-
Okay.
For the sale of town property, and those will be posted with the, the information.
Okay.
It's just that one.
Okay, so-
The select meetings?
Yes.
Okay, there. Well, not the Friday, April 1st.
No, but just, the April 1st is just a public hearing.
Just a public hearing.
And then your first one, and then you have a second public hearing prior to the board meeting.
But you'll be there.
Well, that's-
Yeah, yeah. Yes, it'll be a special public hearing, not a regular select meeting.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
We're supposed to be there.
Yeah, town offices, conference room, okay. Got it.
Well, the April 11th is just before the regular select meeting.
Right, it is.
That's right.
We just start that a little bit earlier. Okay, we are going to go into non-public on a personality issue and on a litigation claim issue, so we have two, two general letters. Okay.